Hi.
Hi. We are live streaming, everybody. It's on.
Hi.
We are live streaming, everybody. It's on.
Yeah, you know, a friend of mine told me when your son is between like 10 and 13, they still have to take that father and son trip that they'll never forget. So it took Walter, when he was 12, to Iceland and go all the way. All these around, visited glaciers, did tour tours.
Hi Jonathan, Jim Frank here. Just want to let you know I'm here and I'm muted. I think you're muted.
Sorry, sir. I was just asking to make sure you didn't need anything for the meeting.
No, I think gorgeous shape. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hi Bob.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
The beginning of some Zoom meetings is like a really long elevator ride where you're standing there in the crowd. Except I know you guys.
I was just gonna say, is that a compliment, Bob?
Oh, yeah. Of course. You bet. I just got kicked out of the executive session that the council is in since they were discussing the Argo, so I'm not sure how long they'll be. Hopefully not too long.
I was told that they're hopefully wrapping it up pretty quick here.
Okay, good. That's good.
Actually, I just got another one that says we will be late. So hopefully not too late.
That was, yeah, they should have been pretty close, I would think. Never know. City councils are sort of unpredictable, as we all know.
Is it still raining in Idaho Springs?
It's sprinkles.
Drizzling.
That's good, though. Maybe that means pretty lilacs in a couple of weeks here.
Yeah, if the hail doesn't bash them down, right?
It's not often it hails in Clear Creek County, but I feel like that was kind of special.
Yeah. Looks like three of the last four days or five days.
Yeah, was that Gareth talking about our hail in the past? We've had some pretty bad storms, or Jonathan, in the past. We've had a lot of hail. When I was growing up here, it was some bad storms, but they have let up.
It's been a while since we had that kind of car.
Yeah, it really is. But we've had some good rain the last few days. It's really amazing. I know the rafting community couldn't be happier, that's for sure.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta think it's gotta be a record amount of precipitation since March, right?
They said, and I can't remember if it was spring, or what the timeframe was, but on the news the other night, they said it's the most precipitation they've had, I think, in the Denver area in that particular timeframe since 1944.
Wow.
Which I have trouble believing it. It may be because of my age, I'm jaded. I've seen it all, you know?
Right.
Didn't seem that damn wet.
Yeah, but I think, I think for here, right, it's, it's really good news, too, because I mean, the fire, if it turns about fire, we're getting pretty bad, right?
Yeah, and it'll turn out that way, I'm sure, again, but I think we all have friends on the Western Slope somewhere, and they're really so dry, unbelievable.
Right.
They are still predicting a hot summer.
Yeah. Heck, here, too, as a matter of fact, we're part of that prediction, I think.
Yes.
Jessica, this is us telling you about, about our puppy. He just sleeps there all the time.
Where is he? Oh, right there in the back. So cute.
Champ needs to come visit at City Hall.
He wanted to come today real bad, but I said no.
Well, Gareth, it sounds like our parking garage is moving forward, at least in the paper front right now.
Right, which is great news.
Oh, yeah, it really is.
And with, with the rate structure that Jonathan's proposing, I mean, you know, we'll probably double, we'll get pretty close to what Brett Kenridge is doing per space, which is going to help a lot with the financing, for sure.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's for sure. And every time I hear about construction costs going up, the percentage increase seems to be exponentially higher, but, oh, yeah. Now, no, how many of you heard, you what Jonathan C. Dodd has come up with 1 million, and then they doubled the pot to 2 million on the extra money?
In theory, I think it's still make sure everything pencils out kind of stage, but it sounds like we got some opportunities.
Yeah.
Hopefully they'll be done here in a moment. I feel like I have been telling, living this every single time that we've gone to council.
The executive session didn't start until, what, 5:45, and I, I can't imagine the city council ever accomplishing anything in 15 minutes. It would be a record.
Carmen said that's all the time she needed. I'm like, are you sure?
She's paid a little more than the city council people, so I know Mike usually hurries her along, pretty much. Libby, I had a question I meant to ask you the other night on one of the meetings, and I was wondering how many patrons or what is the circulation, however you measure it, at the Idaho Springs Library right now, and I'm wondering how 19, or 2020, that was a throwback, 2020 compared to 19?
Um, well, it's through the county library district. We have about 6,400 cards, I think, out of 10,000 people in the county. So that's patron circulation obviously took a dip, but e-circulation increased and virtual programming increased quite extensively. But yeah, our traditional circulations were not very fun during the pandemic, so.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay, but anyway, but it's still a fairly strong, what should I say, patronage, from what I've understood through the years for a size and everything?
Yeah, yeah, we're a very busy library, so especially just, our town size is small, but there's a lot of avid readers, and then like people that work in the county use the library quite a bit, too, so we have like neighboring county cards and stuff like that, but it is interesting to see the e-services and the e-programming spike and the numbers on some of that, like our virtual story hours and stuff like that have been kind of cool and have gained some new people that don't normally use the library, but can now use it from their home, which is pretty convenient where you can put a story time on with a librarian while you're getting dinner ready or something like that, so. And the virtual craft programs for adults have also expanded, so we were about monthly around, I don't know, 15 people that gathered at each branch, so 30 a month, and that's bumped up to like 60 or 70 a month, so there's been some silver linings.
Good. Well, I'm assuming, I guess maybe I should ask, I shouldn't assume anything, it's usually a mistake on my part, that the e-commerce, the e-patronage will probably not go back to what it was before, people have gotten used to it.
Yeah, I think it'll grow. Yeah, there's a convenience to that, when you can have a book on your phone or on your Kindle or both places at the same time, it's pretty convenient.
I know Zoom has made me incredibly lazy, a little heavier, and I'm not hiding it very much, now that I can get out. I'm not getting out as much. And if I have a choice between a Zoom meeting or going somewhere, I mean, if it's even the least inconvenient, I'll go with Zoom, and so I don't know.
You might be the only person that says that, Bob. No, I'm just kidding. No, people definitely.
I'm gonna rage. Probably one fine night, one fun night at a local pub drinking wine, and I'll be good to go the rest of the time, so.
Yeah, I'm gregarious, so I definitely am excited to see the vaccination rates increasing and get some outdoor activity. John, the downtown looks great. I was excited to see that come into fruition.
Excited to get the flowers out there, too, and we got extra flowers this year for all the businesses, so I was thinking that we need to bring a couple to the library, their whiskey barrel, half barrels, so if you guys want some, we've got like 60 extra barrels.
Okay.
Then you might update us on the master planning process for that set.
Yeah, that's actually, so we started that process and brought the city's contractor on, and her name has changed, she has a company called Studio Seed and several partners who have been working in Colorado for some time, and we're gonna start kicking that process off. She's gonna go through a walkthrough, and I'm getting her a bunch of GIS files, so she can start looking at things, but we'll have a pretty good public engagement process for that and make sure everybody's involved in how that looks in the future, but it'll be like infrastructure and redoing the parks and all the fun stuff of downtown, I think. And the train, of course, the train.
Yeah, so that really will kick off big time next week, actually, so.
Yeah.
It's a lot of good things going on, for sure.
Oh, they're coming in. Hello, Councilman Carmen.
Bob, what's the latest you can share on the Argo?
I wasn't looking at the screen. I, actually, I don't know, there's supposed to be a bunch of update meetings this Friday.
Okay.
As far as that goes, with the financing is the, you know, always the big question, it certainly is right now, and so I, I really don't have anything later than what's appeared in the papers and so on, so anyway, but it's a matter of a delay, we're in a holding pattern right now.
Right.
I think.
We're gonna go ahead and get started, sorry, public, and everybody that's in our meeting tonight for being a little late. So it is 6:17, we're gonna start the city council work session for tonight. We've got a few items to go through tonight and discuss, and we're gonna start out with the parking management agreement. John Kane has been working very hard and crafting and going back and forth with interstate parking to pretty much negotiate us what we think is a good contract with interstate moving forward. You had several sheets in our packet to kind of give an update of the renegotiation and how we would move forward with this. So real quick, John, I'm gonna let you kind of take over and give a summary of, of what you've done, and then we'll open it up for discussion with council.
Mayor and council, this agreement is the culmination of well over a year's worth of work with interstate. We had this process underway last year, and we're hoping to do it last year, but COVID kind of threw us a wrench, and so we weren't able to do that. As you know, last year in the pandemic, we changed the parking in the parking lots to free. When we opened up again, we did start charging in the parking lots again. We changed it to a three-hour maximum stay at the lower rate, but people can stay at the higher rate for as long as they want to. After that, we had the C-DOT construction happen in the parking lots, which kind of threw us a wrench as well, and so we've been having quite a few changes just to our parking facilities, which made it difficult to kind of understand where we'd be at the end of that process. We're hoping that that process in the parking lots is over on Memorial Day, and when I say hoping, we know it will be. And so we'd like to get this agreement on paper, so that interstate knows that they have a little bit of security in our community, and we know that we're gonna have parking management in our downtown and our residential areas into the foreseeable future. We have been talking about a lot of things. I kind of listed in my staff report the notable changes to the agreement, although we have, can answer questions about anything you guys have in there. The big one is the revenue share. Interstate's agreed to do a 50/50 revenue split with us for the parking facilities. There's a couple of reasons that we're doing a revenue share instead of a fee to interstate, and I just wanted to clarify exactly why that is. When interstate came to the city, they provided all of the equipment, all of the manpower, and all of the know-how from a technical perspective of how to run the kiosk and the apps and everything. That represented a fairly significant capital expense for them. And so in this case, where we are working with interstate as a partner, it doesn't really make much sense to pay them a fee, because they have their costs associated with it, too. This is a true partnership. And so we think that the 50/50 revenue share, the net revenue is, is a pretty good deal. Now, net revenue in this agreement, I put it in the scope of service, I just wanted to clarify so everybody's sure, there are credit card transaction fees as well as some transaction fees required for the use of the app that we use and for the touchless parking system that has been employed, and so those fees are taken from the gross revenue. And so we're left with the net that we split with them after those fees are removed, and so that's in the scope of service, that's the transaction fees that you see defined there. Other changes, we are changing the fee schedule in the parking lots a little bit. Currently, when you stay three hours, then you keep paying $5 an hour after that three-hour stay, regardless of you leave and come back. In the new system, after three hours, people will be able to start the clock again at a dollar an hour, and the reason for that is, is we have such a small and confined area, we want to promote people coming back for dinner if they're in our community, not just stay for breakfast, and this will allow them that flexibility, so that they can have reduced rate for parking for dinner and a reduced rate at breakfast. So the only people that would be charged at the maximum rate are people who are parked all day, taking up a spot downtown all day long, and so that's kind of something we did to try to encourage tourism and the activities that we know occur in our downtown. Another big change that we're going to do is we are going to work on the customer service side of this. I think we've gotten most of the customer service kinks worked out, and interstate has worked really hard to make sure their ambassadors are around and that they are answering questions. We have the ability to offer some parking vouchers. In certain cases, the ambassadors, for instance, say you go to the meter and if something happens, well, we can have a code that we can give that person, just to make sure they don't have a bad experience in our community. That's something we're gonna try to do. We are also going to try to use QR codes on the signs, so that we can track ambassadors and where they are, and that just gives the ambassadors a little bit of protection, as well as the city a little bit of understanding of where people are and how their routes are working, and if we need to think about adding staff or anything like that, so that's the reason for that. I did make a recommendation in my staff report that we raised the, the prices for parking, and there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one is the downtown is going to require some improvements in the next few years, and using parking as a revenue source really firmly places some of the onus for those improvements on visitors to our community who are impacting it. It helps us keep that impact off of residents in our community, where we can have visitors pay for things like maybe the parking garage, or eventually we're gonna have to replace the streetlights downtown, curbs and gutters need to be improved downtown, and this just gives us a little bit bigger pot to do that. I recommended that we go to a half-hour free parking for everyone. Hours two and three would cost a buck fifty instead of a dollar, and then subsequent hours would cost $5. That's kind of the parking speed, the structure that I think will work the best. It will help us build a significant revenue source specifically utilized in downtown that doesn't affect residents. Just to remember, all residents of the city and county can park for free downtown currently. Residents of the city can also park for free in the residential zone, so there's really no impact to a city or county resident. In my staff report, I made a couple other notes of changes. The first one is enforcement for violations. We're gonna call our, our, our violations violation, a violation and notice of fee. So basically, what we're going to try to do is meet interstate in the middle, so we don't have a ticket that's more expensive. All parking violations will be $25, and then they'll double after 14 days, which is basically the same as a city ticket. Those will be able to be signed into court, where they would be subject to the full force of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code, which I think is a maximum fee of about $2,700 if necessary, but we're gonna try to work through a process before we return them into official city tickets. Other proposed changes, the bus staying lot is not a big revenue generator for us, and it has a lot of value from a free lot perspective, both for users of the recreation center, people who commute on bus staying, and just as overflow parking, we'd like to make that a free part of, just a free parking area, and it'll be managed that way. Interstate can still help us with some of the citations that may occur there, and they can just kind of help us manage those parking lots, and all that would change is that it's just free parking. We also recommended some changes to employee county and teacher permits. This is because we have very limited parking downtown. Currently, we only have 400 spaces. That may increase when, when the track, well, it will increase when C-DOT is done, but we're not 100% sure exactly how all that works. I suspect we're gonna get back a couple hundred spaces, hopefully we'll be up to 600, but we'll see how that goes. Because of that, we have a couple of things we'd like to do. The first one is to discontinue employee permits. What that would do is not still affect the city resident. City residents would still be able to park in the parking lots unlimited, as long as they want to, and it wouldn't change anything. City residents would still be able to park in the parking lots unlimited as long as they want to, and it wouldn't change anything. County residents would be limited under this plan to three hours of parking instead of just unlimited parking in the parking lots. We'd give them three hours, which is the average length of stay downtown, which we know now from the interstate data. So that's enough time for a dinner or anything like that that they want to do. And then after three hours, they would just go into the half hour free, dollar an hour kind of thing. And that way, we can just kind of try to encourage some turnover from those folks. And then the last thing is, we are proposing eliminating teacher permits. And that's not to say that we don't want teachers to park for free. We definitely do, and we want them to have access to the school. But what we would do is, most of them park in the bus staying lot already, which would be free. And then in the school year, what we would like to do is work with the, with Carlson to see if we can come up with a little bit better situation for how teachers are parking there. There would still be the free parking. There's also some spaces, if you think about Carlson on the north side, that are, are very underutilized, just on the school side of the street over there. That might be able to be utilized for teachers as well. So we think that that won't really have a demonstrable effect on the teachers at all. So basically, what I ended my staff report here is just a recommendation that we adopt this scope of services. I am sure that you have questions, and I am here to answer them, as is the interstate team. And so I just opened up for that.
All right. Thanks, John. Good work on this. And I'll start out with a question, and maybe I missed it. I've read through it three times, but I still did not see anything that said term. Have we determined some sort of term with interstate? And what page was that on?
Yes, sir. So this is a scope of service document with a couple of sections related to the contract in it. The contract will be our normal city contract. Legally, the city can enter into a year-long contract, but we can set it up to renew under certain conditions, and that would be the intention with this contract. So basically, we would have a renewal period yearly, but the intention would be, it would be a, a multi-year contract.
And have we negotiated with Interstate of what they would like that, what they would like to, so where, we know where to negotiate back with Interstate with?
We had been talking about three years, I think, in general. Gareth, I don't know if you have thoughts about what you'd like to renegotiate?
Yeah, uh, three years would be ideal. That was a, that was the number I think we all talked about.
What maybe I would like to see is three years, or we should relook at it, what, if and when the parking deck gets built. Now, if we have that built in, you know, we might wanna, we get the deck done in two years. We might, we might want to look at this contract again and see if there is an, an additional benefit to the city and something that works better for, for Interstate as partners in this thing. Any thoughts on that, council?
So the three years is a solid three years, or is it renewable each year?
It's renewable each year, and there's also an out clause if it's necessary for Interstate or for us. If the parking facilities do not generate revenue. So there's a couple of situations. Say the parking facilities don't generate revenue that allows Interstate to operate. That could be an out clause for Interstate, whereas for the city, you know, we could, we could have a similar thing. So if it becomes unprofitable on either side, there is a way to, to give notice to the other side to end the contract.
And I like Mike's idea if, if the parking structure were to come in, that we could relook at this for both sides.
Yeah, we, we would be fine with that.
Agreed. And I also agree with the dollar fifty. You know, Jonathan's absolutely right about the tourist seriously impacting downtown and the need for us to develop more spaces. And the fact that county and city folks can park for free. It just seems like the fair thing to do is have the tourists help pay for that additional parking that we desperately need.
And I also agree with the north side of Carlson. I think that should be allowed for teachers on the north side of Carlson.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it should be allowed, and that's what we want to work at. Actually, John and, and Jessica and Danny and, and Andy went out and took a walk. And we, we walked around to, you know, we're trying to see, what does it make sense to try to make up some of the sixty spaces we're losing on Minor Street? And, and we, we did find some, you know, we've got residential parking on the north side of Carlson, which they, they use, and we'll figure out a way that they can use those during the week. They're not there on the weekend. So for that to be just residential park, there's nobody ever parked there. So it, it makes sense to, to have that as a paid parking area. There was a couple of three hour areas. I think we found about twenty five to thirty places around town that if we activate them as paid parking, were there either three hour parking, or actually, we have some over by the bank that, or by a citywide bank that's thirty minute parking. So that doesn't make a lot of sense that we've got four or five parking places there. That's a thirty minute parking area. So we think that we should turn those into, and also this helps our, the ambassadors because in a thirty, thirty minute or a three hour parking, they actually have to go and, and, you know, okay, you know, this car's been here. It's here. There's the time. It's two oh three PM. You know, then they have to go back thirty minutes later and check to see if that car is still there or not. So I think it, it creates a hard way of enforcing. So this is also helping us out with the ambassadors being able to manage the parking force.
Uh, I was wondering, I know we've heard the numbers before, but I just wanted to get a little refresher on parking rates in other mountain communities, and a couple of them just for comparison. I'm assuming we, we would be much more into the current market by raising our prices.
Much, much cheaper than literally everywhere else by a factor of at least fifty percent. I think if you guys, do you want to speak to the communities you're involved in, just to kind of give some note or some clarity? I know, for instance, Green Mountain Falls has a very similar structure to us. It's a five dollar escalator, but it's after two hours, I think, right?
Right.
Yep. And so then there's other communities, Breck, what, I don't know what Breck is right now.
Uh, there's an accelerator to it. So, you know, what, just if you get up to three hours, it's easily double what your, what your max would be for three hours. Yeah, yeah.
I did a lot of analysis on our system and utilizing the number of spaces we have now and potentially could have in the future. Raising to a dollar fifty almost triples the revenue from the, the parking facilities. Raising it to a dollar seventy five only like raises a very, it's, it's inconsequential compared to just raising it to a dollar fifty. And I think from a psychological standpoint, a dollar fifty, it's easier math. It sounds better. I think it's a good price for us right now. Because you can, you know, you can do it in your head. You can figure out what three hours is very simply. You know, we may be able to charge more for it, but I think also, one of the things we've always said is this isn't necessarily about, you know, this is about building capacity in Idaho Springs and making it better for residents and managing, like I said, the tourist impact. And this does that without really, you know, sticking it to the tourists too badly. So we can, we can kind of, this is a level that's appropriate for the amount of revenue that we may need for the downtown, I believe.
And we're still doing what we said we would do with this money is, you know, put it back into improvements, infrastructure improvements into the downtown. Of course, we, we, we kind of took a left turn on that when we had COVID. And we wanted to be able to use some of that money for some of the things to help us get through the COVID situation. So.
A lot of these folks are coming from, uh, you know, bigger cities, and so a dollar fifty here compared to what they pay at home when they go to their downtown areas, um, pretty small. And she calls us five, six, seven dollars an hour.
Right.
Depending where you're at. So the, the dollar fifty, I think is fair, and it's good revenue for us. I do, um, on, on your staff report, on your staff, uh, letter, Jonathan, you put the first three hours of, would be three dollars. Actually, the first three dollars, the first three hours would be four fifty with the new rate. I calculate. And that's on page seven, uh, under rates.
The first three and a half hours would be three dollars. I did write that incorrectly. I apologize.
It's okay. Just don't let it happen again.
All right.
Have you talked to Chamber of Commerce or anybody?
Yeah, I'm the vice president of the Chamber of Commerce, and we have had pretty extensive conversations about parking. I, when we started this program, I talked to literally every business on Minor Street to try to see what the average length of stay is downtown. Like, for instance, if I want to go to one of the larger restaurants, what it would take to wait to go to the restaurant and then maybe go grab an ice cream cone afterwards and go visit the Spice and Tea Shop. Three hours is, is kind of what we had kind of put as the low level of a stay downtown, depending on how busy it is. And the data over the last almost three years now bears that out. I guess two years, two and a half years now bears that out as a three hours is about the average ticket in Idaho Springs. And so that's the number that is informing this. We have talked a lot about, could we have a voucher program expanded to where businesses could offer vouchers to people who come and shop in their stores? It's entirely possible with the system we're using. And like I said, we'd like to have some codes available from a customer service perspective for people as well. So the chamber has been very involved, and we will, I would love to keep them involved because we, uh, they're a valuable source of information about how businesses, you know, what is needed to have the second and tertiary stops on a, on a shopping trip in Idaho Springs.
Okay. I think it sounds like that council is in a agreement here that we should prepare a motion for our next regular meeting and have it, uh, have it ready for moving us forward. All right, sounds good.
Mayor and council, we appreciate it. This has been a long process, and we appreciate your time and consideration here.
Appreciate the work you did on it, Jonathan.
Yeah, it was good work.
Thank you.
And one thing that I want to also say is to Interstate, because they've been on this roller coaster ride with us, you know, uh, from the start of this thing, cutting it off, they go into free parking over COVID, and then coming in, you're, you know, starting it back up, and they've been very patient and working with us, and, and not one time have I ever called Gareth or Danny or Jessica, and they haven't responded in a very fashionable way. So thank you as well, Interstate team.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you. We've really enjoyed working with you guys. You've been really fair. And we love the city, and we're, we're looking forward to growing with you guys.
Yeah, all right.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, our net, our next item on tonight's work session, library operation agreement. We had a work session about this and had some pretty deep discussion about what council thought would be fair to not only the city, but as an agreement should always be fair to the other party as well. So what we did is Carmen did craft a agreement. And in your packet, it kind of had comparison to what the prior agreement looked like, what the ask from the library district was, and then kind of a summary of, of what we kind of set our bases on, on discussion tonight. I'm hoping everybody had a chance to read through the agreement and, and have some, some thoughts or some ideas about this, what we should change, or, or if this is a good enough document for us to adopt. So I'm just gonna open it up for conversation amongst council.
I personally thought it would look good.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, I like it. I like the agreement. Good, what they wanted.
And I think the, you know, some of the, you, you know, I know there was a big question of the twelve thousand dollars a year that was being asked from the library district. And I think we've done a really good job of taking quite a bit, if not a lot, you know, a lot of the expenses they were referring to that'd be covered under that, under that money. I, I believe this is, is a fair document, in my opinion. Taking care of the outside, a hundred percent responsible for the landscaping, not paying for the water that's used for the irrigation. One thing that I did see that I, I'll just want to, and I, and I tried to, um, to clarify this with Mr. Woods. Under number one, very first, the city shall be responsible for the following. Upkeep repairs including snow removal of snow, ice and debris of all sidewalks and driveways. Um, I'm not sure what driveways that might be referring to. And I think there was a, a kind of a back and forth with myself and Mr. Woods about who is gonna be responsible for the steps from the front door down to the sidewalk. Because I would have a concern about our public works employees as it continues to, uh, uh, snow falling to have to dedicate a lot of time to, to maintain. Libby, do you remember that conversation or Mr. Woods?
Yeah, the librarians over here are a tough crowd. We're more than happy to shovel the steps. So, no problem.
Right. And the only reason for that, Libby, is I, I would just hate for it to start building up and our guys could get over there.
It's a non-issue. It's not a big deal. We were planning on that anyway. I think the driveway we're talking about is the, the alleyway between the school and the library. Our, yeah, the playground.
Yes, that is the driveway we're referring to, which leads to the elevator entrance.
Is that where the dumpsters are gonna be? Okay. All right. Of course, John Bordoni is not with us tonight. I don't think that's a problem. We will, how, how big is that area? It's two cars wide and about two cars deep, right?
Yeah, the final plans, that's what I believe it will be.
Okay.
And are there cars parked in the driveway at times?
There are, yes, but John Bardoni and his crew usually gets here before we're here. So I don't really see that being an issue, but we'll work with John. I mean, he's great.
All right. Let me see. I thought I had something else. And please, council, speak out if you had something else that you wanted verified on this agreement.
Yeah, Mike, I did have one thing that's related to what you're talking about. Uh, we're looking, uh, that city would be responsible for all of the sidewalks. Now, that includes the sidewalks within the landscaping as well. Like from the top of the stairs out to, uh, the sidewalks.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that because they can be, you know, plowed out with the smaller equipment they're using, but I just wanted to clarify. That's all I had, Mike.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? I, I'm gonna hold my breath, but I'm gonna let Mr. Woods speak. Go right ahead.
First of all, I want to thank Carmen for getting rid of all the lawriees. Uh, even though my father was a lawyer, I really appreciate it. We believe that it looks like a fair agreement for both sides. Your willingness to take over responsibility for all of the exterior property convinced us very easily to give up our request for some money, which means basically you're responsible for everything in the exterior, and we're responsible for most of the interior. And that's, I think, an excellent agreement. I had only one issue that I would like to, uh, put back in if we can, and it's modified. I believe it's one C. Any major improvements that would increase or serve to maintain the capital value of the building is the sole responsibility of the city. I would like to see put that back in, but delete or serve to maintain. In other words, it would be only any major improvement that would increase the capital value of the building.
Okay. I think that would sound fair. I'm trying to think of, uh, an item that might look like. You have, do you have something that might?
No, I don't, but, uh, that doesn't mean I want to leave it out because you never know what's gonna come up tomorrow.
Right, right. If we're gonna, yeah, if, if we're gonna add some, and I'm okay with that. If we're gonna add something to that building that's gonna increase the value of that building.
Right.
Yes, I don't see why we own the building, and if we're gonna do either, you know, something that's gonna, you know, if we're gonna hang bells and whistles on it to make it, I mean, I'm just using something, but to increase the value of that building, it makes sense for the city to be responsible for, for that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
No, I agree.
We will bring it up before our board tomorrow night for their discussion, and we have any changes, we will get back to you.
All right. Libby, you have anything to add or, um, any thoughts?
Oh, thank you. It was, it was great. Good to see it. I'm glad it's Stripe Day. Carmen, good, good choice. Sorry, I'm just using humor. I don't have anything to add. Thank you for your time. I think the agreement looks great.
I think they need little hats on and, and shackles. No, I'm just kidding.
I will only add that our lawyer thoroughly agreed. She wanted to congratulate Carmen as well.
Okay, well, good. That's good to hear. Um, I know Carmen spent, uh, quite a bit of time making sure that we had a good, uh, agreement that to present back to you. So we'll get those changes done, uh, and also, uh, with this, we will, uh, get this adopted. And, uh, we will just continue on. Thank you so much for all you do at the library. It's a wonderful facility. Um, uh, when are we gonna get back open?
Today, we're open.
You're, you, you lifted it. You're great.
Come in and see me. I'll get you some great COVID reads.
Okay, that's good to hear. That's good to hear. Alright, um, good work, uh, council and Carmen. We will now move to the EV licensing agreement. Uh, another agreement, three and three in one night. Hopefully we can, um, make, uh, uh, ChargePoint and Jim, uh, happy and. And we can get this going as well. We've been also, this, uh, uh, this charging station, we've been working on for some time as well. So to finally get to a point that we may, uh, and hopeful. That we have an agreement that we can move forward with, uh, charging stations, uh, is gonna be great. So with that, um, Carmen, you wanna, do you wanna take it and, and talk about this agreement?
Sure, I'm happy to, Mayor and Council. What you have in your packets tonight. Um, is the latest version of an agreement we have been working on with EV Build for, uh, some weeks now. As you know, council, um, we started from an agreement that, uh, really required. Quite a few edits in my view, and I'll say that, that Jim Frank, who's on the call, and EV Bill have been really lovely and receptive to. Most of the amendments that I proposed and, and requested, they've just been, um, really a pleasure to deal with and what's in your packet. Reflects an agreement that both we and, and EV Build, uh, view as acceptable and really. As in acceptable final form, except for one issue, and that is a big issue. And that's compensation or rent that maybe due, um, to the city. That, that was identified early on by council as something that you identified as a priority to talk about. And, uh, that's something you would like to see and need to see in this agreement is some consideration in, in the form of real dollars. Uh, in return for the dedication of these spaces for strictly. Electric vehicle charging use. So to start the ball rolling, as you see in the cover memo, this agreement from me and your packets, council. Uh, we proposed to EV Build, again, as a starting point. Proposed compensation for these, at least the beginning for parking spaces for charging stations, stations. We proposed that they essentially pay half the amount of parking revenues. That would be generated if those four spaces were occupied full-time or the entire eight hours. 10A to 6P that we charge parking fees during the busy season of, of six months equivalent. So basically, half what we would get if any vehicle were parking there all the time. That. The math is in the cover, cover memo from me. You'll see that came out to almost. 10 and a half thousand a year, uh, $10,440. Under that rationale and calculation, that's more specified in the memo. Um, Mr. Frank and, and, uh, ED Bill, uh, welcomed that, that initial figure. They did, as I outlined in my memo, ask that you, council, consider a few things that, that in their view sort of mitigates. Um, maybe payment in that amount. Uh, and they instead proposed for your consideration tonight. Compensation in the amount of $7,200 for the first year, again, instead of. 10, 440, 72, but with an automatic escalator every calendar year of 5%. So. That's the issue really principally, I think, before you, Mayor and Council, is the issue of compensation. I'm happy, however, and I know Mr. Frank is too, to answer questions or concerns or, or desired amendments on other items. In the agreement, uh, but we'd really appreciate your focus on the issue of compensation. Maybe as the first issue that, that you tackle, but we're happy to talk about whatever you like.
Um, so what I'd like to say is, um, you know that we all, if not most of the council, um, did question and ask. We were gonna, or, or say that we were gonna give free space, uh, for these charging spaces, uh, for these charging stations. And was that a right thing to do? And that's when we, uh, asked Carmen to reach out and perhaps something, come up with. Uh, some sort of formula in what this could look like. She did that. And then there was a counter back. So I, I would say that, uh, we, uh, did what we needed to do by, um. Showing, uh, what we're supposed to be doing and looking out for the best interest of the city. Uh, and coming up with the number, and of course, these are contracts that are negotiated. And I firmly believe that, um, that EV Bill, um, uh, came back and I, it, it's a little bit. You know, it's a little over $3,000 less, but I, I believe that's a, that's a fair, um, give, uh, to the city. For, for using these parking places, uh, for charging stations. Uh, council, any other thoughts on that?
Mayor, I would agree with the 5% escalator. And I would just suggest that this is fair compensation when you consider the location. Of these stations. That's very important. I don't, uh, you know, I, I don't think if you averaged out. What, uh, you know, that bus staying area parking was bringing in, it was, it was pretty low, so. I think that thi- this is reasonable. As much as I would have, uh, not supported the, the first request. Uh, I would support, uh, this, this request. This, this is reasonable and a reasonable return for the city. Yeah, I assume that 5% is compounded, not just on the base amount. Okay. Not a big deal.
Do we know? Very well. Do we know the average? Um, on off of the bus stand? Either daily or weekly, Mike, do you know the?
$2.55.
What is it, Jonathan?
$2.55.
How many people? I'm sorry, buddy.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's very limited. There's a lot of people who park there free for bus staying and for rec center, but it is hardly ever packed. So it's kind of like one of those deals, like, there's no, it's not really congested at the moment. I think there's space for 50 cars. About.
So. So the. Are, are, are more, more folks on the bus staying than the snow staying? Then yes or no?
Also, the Loveland bus picks up there, but they could, in theory, do that in another location in town too, if that was required. They just need a spot in Idaho Springs.
For the snow staying?
The Loveland employee bus usually picks up there too.
Well, yeah, but there, there's a snow staying bus as well.
I don't think snow stay, I think it goes up to Winter Park. I, I think it'll, uh, the snow stain, that's different than the bus stain. Snow stain, I think, only serves two communities. And it's very, it's only a couple of runs a day. Now, bus staying, we started out with, we started out with one run and I think they're running four buses now. I mean, that, that's how much it used. So it does get, the bus thing does get used quite a bit on this, uh, on this, uh, western, uh, I-70 and eastern I-70, uh, corridor.
They're, they're still both powered though by CDOT, yes, Mike?
I'm sorry, say again, Jim?
Well, they're both powered there by CDOT. Is that correct?
They are both by CDOT. Also, what's gonna happen is there's also a micro transit that's starting up. Micro transit is, uh, is a little different. These are 14 passenger buses. That, because what would happen is bus thing wanted to run in the express lane, they're always, you know, this is an express lane, people want to get there. And you put a, you put a big coach in that lane and the traffic's, so, so bus thing was never allowed. This is a way to try to move more passengers on the I-70 corridor on that, on the busy, you know, mainly the, uh, ski weekends. And try to cut down on capacity, you know, uh, I, I think they're gonna save maybe 300 cars a day. Um, and they're doing 10 buses and this is kind of a, a trial period to see if it was worth, uh, even make happen. You know, CDOT's trying anyway to, with, of course, support from Vale and, and, you know, Keystone. To get, to get customers up there as quick and as efficient as they can. So there could, uh, uh, actually, um, I think that that micro transit is stop, stopping in Idaho Springs. So there would be, uh, spaces. Also, with that, the discussion with CDOT, whenever, whenever we do our parking deck. Uh, with the amount of money that they have, uh, offered to help us get this done. We're gonna be required to provide an X amount of spaces. One for EV charging stations inside the structure, but also part of the, you know, we all, you know. There are gonna be a little bit of strings attached and that's requiring, you know, I, I don't know the number, 15 spots that are dedicated for. Bus staying and micro transit riders. So, um, th- they're already planning for that. Um, so there will be some of those type of people that are parking there and leaving their cars and there will be dedicated spaces for CDOT.
Yeah, I'd like to say, I like this, I like this location a lot better than the downtown, uh, location that we had talked about previously. Also, is the infrastructure something that EV Build is taking care of, right? They're doing all the infrastructure?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Have we, that passed, I'm sorry, we ran that past, um, Excel energy. It's already been through their engineering department.
Okay, uh, I believe that, um, I did see it here, was it a 10-year agreement? Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion, uh, council, thoughts?
I think, yeah, I think it's very fair and we are talking about, uh, you know, reducing, uh, parking fees over there anyway. And so this is certainly revenue that we'd be giving anyway, that we wouldn't not have at all. So I'm very happy with this.
And if I might, we're, we're excited to be part of the Idaho Springs community. I think it's a, uh, a great location for this. Charging station and you guys have been wonderful working together. I, I, I think you'll enjoy having it. We'll work hard to keep it. The nice amenity for the public, um, and we're happy to contribute to the city too, um, with this. So thanks for everything.
Alright, thank you, Jim.
I have one other question, Mike. If there is a need for expansion, you know, which is unknown at this time, but if there's a need for expansion, is that? Something that could happen?
Yes, uh, i- in that, in that location, of course, remember, we have to give them four now with the ability to expand for more. And in this location, that can be done.
At a really discounted, discounted rate per space. I'm kidding. Same rate, I guess.
I did have one question, uh, the contract on page eight, under, uh, survival. And, uh. I suspect I've already written this, but I, I just can't find, uh, the number 154 and 167, I can't, uh, can't find in the contract.
That's. It appears like 164 or 157 because of the red line, um, nature.
Is it, is it 54?
It's, uh.
15.
Yeah, 14, 15, I'm sorry, 12, 14, 17, 22, 23. The, the middle digit in those three-digit ones are generally redlined out and sometimes like with a four. With that line in the middle of the four, it's, it's tough to tell that that's.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, we're good for Carmen, uh, to, to, uh, we already got a, we already have, uh. Okay, we will have that on our next, uh, agenda for our regular meeting. Alright, thank you so much, Carmen, for working on that, John. I know you put in a lot of time on that as well, so thank you. And you, Jim, looking for the partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Okay, COVID update. Um, as you can see, everybody is starting to set up on the streets. As of yesterday, the, uh, restrictions as far as capacity in businesses, um, distancing. Uh, in restaurants from being sick, but there's no, there's no requirement for distance. However, um, as, as we were on earlier with Dr. Ryan, as we do every Monday at 2 o'clock. You know, he, he said, you know, we still need to take precaution. You know, this thing's not, COVID has not gone away. And, um, the commissioners, uh, have decided to leave our mask order in place. Um, I believe either all the way through July or mid-July and they would revisit again. Um, we continue to hear from Dr. Ryan, our public health director, that cases are still going up. Um, our, our, um, vaccinated numbers are, I believe he said in Clear Creek County is 39%. And, and statewide is 37%. So, you know, he, his target is, he said, you know, 75% vaccinated. We can start relaxing a little bit because that's a good number. Um, of course, I asked today also, what's the reasoning for people not getting vaccinated? And, you know, my first thought is, uh, people not wanting to get it because they want to see what happens to those that, that, uh, get vaccinated. To see a gr- horn start growing out of their head or they're tracked by the government because of, uh, somebody inserting a tracking device and all of this. You know, uh, we've heard all kinds of, uh, of conspiracy theories about this. But, um, he said, you know, that's some of it, but he said, the more of the big part is, is. People just seem to, they don't have time to get to a facility to get it done. And right now, it is just, we've got Safeway here, Safeway in Evergreen and Walmart. That you can walk in, no appointment, you just walk in and they'll, they'll give you the, give it to you. Set you down for 15 minutes and if you're doing okay, you can go away. So, um, uh, and, and it's, it's a tough position. I will tell you that I received a couple of emails over the weekend. Um, I'm kind of damning the city for, um, having the mask order in place. Um, basically, both of them said that, you know, we came up to the community, restrictions were listed, lifted. And we wanted to come enjoy your community without a mask on and we walked into a place and, and, you know, and, and we told, we were, had to put our mask on. And we got mad and we'll never be back to your town again. So, you, you know me, I, uh, wrote him back very nicely and let him know that, you know, one. That the local government and, uh, city council of Idaho Springs is not responsible for the guidelines. But the governor did lift, uh, uh, the restrictions and left it up to county government to guide us through this. So, um, please come back to our city business again and understand that, um, you know, we, we still have to follow. Under the umbrella of the county for, um, what we can do and what we can't do. Um. I think it's gonna be a crazy year this summer. People are just, you know, cabin fever, they've been, you know, they haven't had, uh, outings like they wanted to. Um, another thing is, what you really need to think about is, we've been getting a lot of moisture. And I've got my fingers crossed that we can do the fireworks on 4th of July. Um, we have to make that decision by when, John? I'm sorry?
June 4th.
June 4th. So, you know, we can just hope for more rain, hope for more rain and. June 4th. So, you know, we can just hope for more rain, hope for more rain and, and, you know, uh, everything will turn green. And, you know, we'll have our summer season and fireworks on 4th of July. Uh, I, we haven't heard and, uh, Chief, if you've heard any different, I don't think we've had any major incidents where people were so mad that we had to call, um, somebody out to give support to a business um, of some, somebody, um, giving them too much trouble. I think we've been pretty good on that, haven't we, Chief?
We have. Uh, we haven't had really a lot of, uh, since I've arrived, we, I'm not aware of a single call that we've had where we've had to deal with somebody who was either upset because they were told to put on a mask. I do think that maybe we'll have some of those things come up this summer as we get more people from out of town, um, coming into town. So I, I, I could see that, but I also think that, I think society in general understands that each, if, if, as long as they know that each county can make their own rules and, uh, we're just enforcing the rules that are set by the, 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 uh, the health folks in this county. So, um, at this point, uh, knock on wood, we haven't had any problems, but, I wouldn't be surprised if there are a few throughout the summer, just with a lot of the, the tourists and people coming from other counties and other, other states.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Other than that, of course, uh, we were told that, uh, all the decisions made for the, um, for the criteria that called the new orders is done by the Public Health Board. And, um, the Public Health Board is made up of three commissioners. So, so they don't ever really get to punt it off on somebody else. They're making these decisions and, and, you know, we'll just have to, to continue to follow along. We don't have any other choice and, and I'm sorry that I'm not willing to go rogue and start our own thing and, 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 uh, take a chance on public health shutting all of our businesses down because we're not following the guidelines. So. Andy, anything else on COVID update that you need to talk about?
No, I, um, gather Carmen, it, it makes sense for us to continue our, uh, uh, emergency ordinance, uh, emergency declaration, uh, for, for the time being, as long as we have some of these restrictions still in place.
All right. Any questions on what's going on with COVID and what our communities, uh, what we're supposed to be watching out for and doing in Idaho Springs? All right. Well, that's the last item on the agenda tonight. Lot of, a lot of good decisions that we made and a lot of good discussion. I really appreciate that. I like everybody getting involved and us moving these things forward. Um, and, um, and nobody has anything else, we can adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, don't forget I'll be a little late on Friday.
I'm sorry?
I'll be a little late on Friday. I spoke to you, uh, over the weekend.
Real fast, uh, are, are we, are we still on Friday, Andy?
At 9:00.
8:00 at Tommyknockers in Art. I'd already told Andy that you're gonna be a little bit late.
Yeah, I should be there by 10.
Okay, very good. Okay. Thanks, everybody.